So I'm going to call this meeting to order at six thirty-two. The roll call is Counselor Casiri, Counselor Jones, and myself, Juliet Parker. Can I get a motion to approve the April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, special meeting minutes?
So move.
Second, Jones?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any no's, any abstentions? Passes unanimously, thank you. So on to new business.
That's page five, is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And I know we have several attendees. I rec- I hear, I see Ms. Surf, Ms. Furlong, Ms. Pratt, and Counselor Franco. Currently at this time, I do not have it open for others to speak, only at this time is the counselors. If you have any suggestions, you can email us at the council email, and thank you guys for attending our meeting. So new business is, we'll take it line by line if that's okay with everyone. So we need to add a rule. This was a request that was put in, establishing a mechanism to move the question with a simple majority being sufficient to move vote, move to vote. This will apply to both Committee of the Hall and Town Council meetings. So I believe I have to open up the other one, sorry, I'm trying to have.
No worries. Take your time.
Is that you're gonna open the rules just so we know where these are coming from?
Yes, I'm believing he's trying to do it under.
Yeah, who would it be?
Well, that would be a good suggestion of where he would like it.
Motions?
Yeah, yeah.
Motions, withdrawal of motions is letter C under Rules of Order, Rule Eight.
Yes, page five.
Letter C, okay.
I'm not sure if there's a better section for that.
Yeah, I was wondering myself. Nope, I don't wanna, I don't wanna under that one.
It looks. Is it referencing in that eight D, part five, where the council may upon a two-thirds vote of the council? Is that the one that we're looking to change? In section eight?
I think that's a consideration.
D.
Oh, D.
D.
Debate, decorum and debate, limits of debate. Oh, yeah, that would be.
That would be a good spot.
That'd be it. So instead of two-thirds, which would be six, it would be five? Or simple majority?
I keep a simple majority.
Simple majority.
Make of the motion as a privilege of speaking first, and motion council should. I'm going to mark, address, mark through the name, address each other as counselor, okay, avoid attacking. At council meetings, councils are at two turns in three minutes. So it would be a section six under D.
I was gonna say, do we want to actually add any specific section for moving the question? And then define that it would be by a majority vote? Because is section five referencing moving the question?
I don't, it does not seem to be.
No, right, seemed to.
Seems to be just debate.
But on the same token, I think I have to put it under two different sections. Because it does have where we list out what the Committee of the Hall does, and then what the council does. No, no, we, do we want that other one? Does he want that section five to change to a simple majority? For the amount of debate? Or we leave that at two-thirds?
I would think that that's a simple majority, because that's usually where we're, it's usually in a debate, right? And you would say move the question to move the question at that point, if you're in a debate.
Right, so we're proposing changing section five from a two-thirds majority to vote, to a, I'm sorry, a two-thirds vote to a majority.
A simple majority.
Simple majority.
Yeah.
It, the question that I have.
That, actually, yes.
Is, um, does this section five also, is it count for both Committee of the Hall and Town Council, is that?
Yeah, that's the, that's what the, he would like, yes, for both. It would have to be written in both sections.
So is there another section in the rules here that's for, I don't know which, which part of this rules are we talking about?
Well, committee procedures, if we go down to Rule Ten.
Okay. Oh, I s- oh, okay, I got you, okay.
Yeah.
J under Rule Ten has the debate decorum and debate limits.
And I'm gonna pause for a moment, I, we have other guests. If, uh, Representative Thomas is at the meeting also. At this time, it's only the counselors are on this committee that are able to speak. Just to let everyone know, if you have suggestions, we can take them under advisement, you can email us at the council, our council emails, thank you. And Ms. Surf, I see your hand, but a- as I stated before, only the counselors. So we can put it in both those sections, which is for E. And Rule Ten to have simple majority, instead of two-thirds to simple majority.
Okay, let me go back up to. So we were doing it in D five. Is that right?
Yes.
That's right, so Rule Eight. Rule Eight, Section D. Paragraph five, is that the right way we would say it?
I would suggest that it have to put in, I believe we need to say that we're moving the question.
Right, we should probably put language in there that it's, or moving the question.
And then the other section is in number ten.
Part J.
In letter, letter J, yep.
So Rule Ten, Part J.
I, I think the wording's gonna be, we have to make sure we're doing it according to Roberts' rules, and.
Do we have those words anywhere in here, move the question?
Not.
Not, okay.
I'm sorry, Chair Parker, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So do we say something to the effect of this would also include moving the question in compliance with Roberts' Rules of Order?
See, I want to make sure that we can move the question that way, so I'm checking my procedure now. I know Counselor Jones, you've read it, you guys have read this extensively too, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Right.
Absolutely.
I'm just gonna, I'm getting my Roberts' Rules out also, I just wanna move the question. The question. Counselor Parker, I'm just gonna step off for a second to get my reading glasses.
Yes.
Okay, I'm back.
So we're on till seven-thirty this evening. Counselor Bordelon has joined, Counselor Bordelon, as I've stated previously to all the members that are here, that currently is only the Rules Committee that is speaking. If you have any suggestions, you're more than welcome to email us, and we can take it under advisement and bring it forth to everyone. But at this time, it's only the committees speaking, thank you.
I'm looking to see if I can find where it is in Roberts' Rules, but there's no move the question or questions.
Which book are you looking at?
This one?
The big one, yeah.
Yep. I'm just in the index trying to figure out, they don't really have a move. Mover of a motion.
Move is just a section when making a motion for two and ten-nine. And it says, also, see also making a motion.
Oh, making a motion for?
Second, suggests the question on the motion.
Taking a motion.
Yeah, that's not helping. I don't think that would.
You got it in the cheap book.
Cheap book, that one?
Yeah. Um, I'm on page thirty-five in chapter four and debate, close debate immediately, the motion for the previous question.
Okay, I get it here too, all right.
In Roberts' Rules, it's called calling the question, that's probably why we're not finding it under.
I moved the previous. That's where we're not, call the order.
So this would still go, fall under the debate?
Yes.
Oh, technically is to say I moved the previous question.
Yeah.
But this requires a two-thirds vote and it's undebatable, but we can always change our rules as long as we are.
All right, so we should not say anything about in compliance with Roberts' Rules of Order, because our rule is different.
Right.
Okay.
But then we are using Roberts' Rules as a guidance, so.
Right.
All right.
Sixteen, six, seven, previous question, yeah, so in our big book, it's on sixteen, six, and seven.
Thank you.
Which is page one ninety-one. Should we call it that, call the question as opposed to move the question, is that the correct terminology for it?
I think that's how you have to say you move to, because of the word of a motion or call seeking to close a debate. It always requires a second and a two-thirds, taking several.
As it says in the, in this, the smaller one, it does say I moved the previous question, so that's.
Well, I think it says I moved to close or end debate, it says sixteen-six says the same thing.
Right. A motion such as I call for or call the question, I demand the previous question, I move to close or end debate. I move we vote now is simply a motion for the previous question, so they all mean the same thing.
But I agree with Counselor Casiri on, we shouldn't reference the so I agree with that too.
So we just, they want suggestion is simple majority, which would put it at five counselors, four, five to four, or five to however they vote.
Yep.
Five in favor, and then no's and abstinent, abstentions. Which does affect the other one, the other role. So we can put in that I'm just trying to think of the right verbiage. Your thoughts?
Well, simple maj- simple majority, so this is on J, right, we're looking at. Would be allowed more than two turns. It's not kind of speaking in debate. The motion may be moved by a simple majority, something along that lines, the motion may be moved. Say a simple majority.
To call the question.
To call the question.
Motion. Say it again?
The, the motion to call the.
A motion may be made by a simple majority.
Yep.
To call the question. To end debate.
Motion may be made.
No, well, it's not, not ma- the motion isn't made by a simple majority, though.
Right.
No, the, it, uh, motion only requires a first person to state it and a second person, and the mayor reiterates what was put on the floor.
To, to call the question requires just a simple majority?
A motion may be made and seconded to call the question.
Which is, do you guys still have your little red book that was provided to us?
Yes.
Yeah. I think I have it right. I'm looking for it right here.
It would be page eight.
Counselor Parker, you're talking about this one?
Yes.
Okay.
It's page eight.
Move. Move the previous question and debate and amendments.
This would be after the two rounds.
Correct, I think so too, yeah, I would agree with that. Motion may be made and seconded. A motion may be made and seconded after.
Two rounds of speaking.
Rounds.
Okay, wait a minute.
Motion may be made and sec- a motion may be made and seconded after two rounds of speaking to call the question with a simple majority.
I was gonna say, and debate can be ended by a simple majority.
Okay, yeah, I like that, to call the question and debate.
All right, repeat it, so I make sure I have everything, motion may be made and seconded.
After two rounds of speaking to call the question, and debate can be ended by a simple majority.
And debate can be ended by a simple majority.
So all we really need to do is put it under Rule Eight. Section D.
Okay.
Would be number six or number five.
Six.
Six.
Section D.
And then, because Rule Ten references Section D, Rule Eight, Section D.
Now, do we need, are we changing, um, number five? We don't want to have both of these in there, right? Does five come out and six, does six replace five?
Well, no, because this is this is speaking of how many times a person, it, they've already had their two rounds, and they want to ask if they can have a third round.
Oh, right, okay.
But that one, that only pertains to them.
This becomes, okay, you're, you're correct, sorry. This is number six, okay. Motion may be made and seconded after two rounds of speaking to call the question and to ma- and debate can be ended by a simple majority. I just wanted to read one different way of saying it, and just, just to get your thoughts. The motion may be made and seconded after two rounds of speaking to call the question and end debate with a simple majority. This where we put ended. And end debate with a simple majority, or debate can be ended by a simple majority, is there?
Say that again, say, say your second one again.
So the second one is the motion may be made and seconded after two rounds of speaking to call the question and end debate by a simple majority.
I like that, all right, you'll have to send that to me.
Let me just, let me just bring it in.
End debate by a simple majority?
End debate by a simple majority.
And end debate, yeah, that's cleaner.
That's cleaner, okay, I just, the, the first one sounded a little more legal easy, but this one just seems like a little bit more to the point.
Sorry.
No, that's all right, that's why we, that's why we discuss it.
Motion may be made and seconded after two rounds of speaking to call the question and end debate by a simple, yeah, it just keeps it clean, okay, I like that. Do you want me to write that up and send it to you, is that?
Please, if that's all right.
Yep.
So that we're all on the same page, and then I'll, we'll send it out when I type up the minutes.
Yep.
All right.
And does this go in section ten as well?
Well, I'm gonna go to ten.
Because that's the.
Oh. Well, Rule, it says Rule Eight, Section D, debate and decorum and debate limits of still shall apply in Cal. However, counselors, oh no, we should add that line in there too.
In section, in Rule Number Ten?
We can do a subsection in letter J, Part J. Just do a subsection underneath, so we don't have to move any of the letters around.
So Rule Number Ten, Section.
J, and do a subsection number one.
Yep.
Number one, and the same rule, we just drop it in there too, okay.
Okay.
Okay, great, all right, that is number one.
That was number one.
Okay.
And, oh, I should have asked if we do not finish tonight. Are you guys okay with us setting up another meeting date?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm not going anywhere now.
Okay.
You done now?
Until next year.
Right, so that was number one, so we're on number two.
All right.
Okay. Number two, another suggestion, eliminate responses to citizens petitions from the town council. I believe this is where the potential of getting in trouble with FOIA the concern.
So I don't, where is that?
I don't even know if that's on here in the rules, technically. Oh, yes, it is, page three.
Page three.
Num- Rule Seven. And number six.
Responses, so we basically eliminate, do we have to then change the numbers of the other section?
Yes. Which is also, because Rule Seven's gonna be another discussion too. So we'll just keep that one in mind.
Okay, so let me just make a note here, so we are now in number two, so this is to take out responses, take out number six, so Rule Seven. Remove number six.
Wait a minute, Rule Seven, A. Subsection six.
You're correct. Sub. A. Okay. That's pretty simple.
So I probably should have asked, should we do these one by one and vote on them right now? I think we should take each item and then vote on it.
Okay.
If that's all right with you, you guys.
Yep.
Or you want to do it as a whole? As if we don't finish tonight.
Oh.
Because I only, this is only till seven-thirty.
Right, okay, so let's do, vote each, each one then.
Okay.
Will they, once they're brought to the council, will they be voted as a group or as a, or as a single item?
That was gonna be my question.
Well, that's.
If, if do they get voted as a group?
That's the question.
Well, we could find out the answer to that, and then if we decide to vote individually, we could do that at the next meeting.
Okay, that works for me.
Okay.
And then we'll just, okay, so we'll move the voting on each of these till the next, till the next meeting, okay.
Right, so we're, okay, we're all okay with number three, I mean, two.
The number two is just taking out numbers, Rule A, subsec- I mean, Rule Seven, subsection A, number six.
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
Rule number three is allow the appointments and reappointments recommend by the, reckon. Recommended by the personal appointments committees to be held under new business. Discussion.
Do we now do them in the consent calendar is where they're done? So, would this allow us to have more discussion on them, is that the, what this does?
I don't know why, but yeah, but we have discussion, and we end up with discussion anyways. The thing is currently. Since we had the last one, technically, we should have suspended the rules and had it as a separate agenda item, we did not do that. Now they want it moved out.
Uh, it's not listed under rule seven, which is the agenda, under consent calendar. It's not in there. So, we don't need.
Appointments.
From that.
Rule seven, consent calendar is set, number seven.
Oh, it does say appointments, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It does.
So, we would, we would move B, appointments, under number ten of new business. So, we move it from number seven, consent calendar, so then it would be, A would be approval of minutes, B would be administrative items, C would be deletions. And then, drop down to number ten, and in new business, it would be appointments.
But technically, this is administrative items.
Right, so we don't even really have to define that it's going in new business, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we would just remove it from consent calendar in section seven.
Well, the, that will put it under new business.
Right.
So, would we remove appointments, is that what we would do? In section seven?
That's up to.
Well, that's my question, is that, is that what we're, we're saying, we just, we just don't list that number B, number B there, is that right?
They want it as a separate item.
Under new business.
Under new business, but technically, it really isn't new business, because we are, it's still an administrative item. It's one of our things that we do all the time, for instance, we approve. Previous minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Unless, we're gonna do this for every committee we have to make sure that we put it on as new business. So, each item, each group, committee groups should have everything submitted as a new item, new business item then. That, so, all committees would have to submit their stuff so that we all can review it. And approve them.
I'm not, okay, it's that, I, I guess I don't really fully understand what, what you just said.
Okay. For instance, there's each group. We have the rules committee.
Mm-hmm.
Personal appointments. Public safety. And any other ad hoc group that we currently have as counselors that we are chairperson. Any committees that we have would be placed under. New business. So, everything that they do in their meetings needs to come to the council as new business.
Okay, is that?
Uh, just a thought process.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I'm, I'm just relying on your experience that.
I'm just saying, we're trying to streamline the meetings to be more efficient.
Right.
Because counselor, one of the counselors sent in a request asking if we can streamline our meetings, once we've approved an item under committee of the whole.
Can I play devil's advocate here?
Go ahead.
So. I'm just gonna look at public safety, so if we send something to public safety. That is most likely gonna end up as an agenda item, no matter what.
Correct.
And rules, like, you know, in the beginning, rules meets, but rules doesn't meet that often, so if something's going to rules in the middle of a, a term, then it's. Probably something that's gonna end up as an agenda item.
Correct.
So, don't they normally end up in new business, anyway?
Those items, personnel appointments meets monthly. Right?
Right. Yeah, I'm just saying that the.
All those other items, yes, they would come under new business. So.
It's just the frequency of how, how often they're meeting, they're meeting more because there is more business, the other committees don't meet as often, so there's less business. But if we look at it in that way, anything going to a committee is generally gonna end up, end up in new business, anyway.
Okay.
That, I'd just thrown it out there, just a thought.
So. Conseguiserie, which pieces would you then, is it appointments and administrative items, both of those would move?
No, we cannot move that, well, just appointments, he said.
Just appointments, okay.
We just have to. Specifically.
Appointments is really. It, it's an action item from a committee. And I think it was thrown in there, I, I mean, I, I don't wanna.
I don't know, this, this has been on there since.
Right, I don't wanna speculate as to why, but it's probably because of the frequency that it was put in there, but you know, I don't, I don't know why it was put in there. And the mayor made this request, so I'm just looking at it as it's an action item from a committee. Any other committee meeting is generally gonna bring an action item, it's gonna go to new business.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine moving, I think y- your question. Chair Parker is just, is it the right place to do it, right, is that?
Right.
It's your, I mean, we're not, we're not debating whether to do it or not, it's just, is this.
No, it was just a discussion item.
Yeah.
Discussion item, so, okay.
I'm, I'm.
Suggestion.
So.
We're not voting on these tonight, anyway, suggestion to remove.
Yep.
Right.
So, if we were, if we do that, then the consent calendar would have A, approval of minutes, B, administrative items, and C, deletions. And then, under new business, we would have an A, appointments. And anything else that goes under new business, so. Is that the, am I, is that the way it would be?
Well, technically, i- if we remove it, it will be considered a new business anyways, as.
Oh.
Counselor Casiri pointed out, if we remove that line item, it's gonna fall under new business.
Got it.
We don't have to list new business, what the items are.
Okay, that actually probably makes it cleaner.
Yes, because if we did that, we would have to list out all the items that.
Okay, alright, if we start listing one, we have to list them all. Just, it'll be whatever it is gonna be, so.
Correct. Alright, so, seven.
But you're correct on the consent calendar items, it'll change to an A, B, C, with, with the new, a new B and a new C, it'll just, it'll just move up.
Which is. Which, I might have to add a. Discussion item, because currently. Well, we get ready to talk about referral lists at the end.
Okay. I'm just making some notes here, so I have it.
Yeah, seven D is a discussion for later. Cause we don't delete or add anything, while we do, technically. But technically, we haven't deleted anything, either.
From town council. Oh, I see, they just, it just keeps growing.
Right.
Okay, okay, for the moment, that's, that's, okay. Okay.
Okay, so, that one, you're gonna remove, suggestion of removing, okay. So, we are on. Number four.
Okay. Okay. So, where is that?
Okay, let's go to the rules, our current rules, and see what page he would like. Where that would be the best place to do it.
Who, who exactly is he referencing in this? Is this presentations from like town staff? Or anyone?
I believe anyone.
Okay.
Could this also be, could this also count in a, a citizen's petition, like we had? Two councils, two meetings ago, where there was a presentation done, is that, this would apply to that?
Well, I believe. You know what, I, I can't assume, but I'm gonna suggest, yes.
So, where would this go, count, order, business petition? Uh, speaking, can we get you, oh, so, could it be in? In rule seven? B.
Uh, no.
I just saw it, I just saw it.
Oh, fiddlesticks, we gotta go back one.
Okay.
So, look at seven. Rule seven, section B, notes of order of business.
Yep, number two.
Yes, number two, if we move that, we gotta.
Good catch, Council Parker.
Okay.
So, we have to remove that one also?
Yep. And seven.
Seven.
Section two.
Seven. Section B. And. Number two. Remove. So, look at number three, that's just the one I was referencing.
Number three, on what page?
Just below the number two we just did, so, page. Page four, section B, those speaking under communications and reports other than committee reports are limited. I'm just looking.
Wait a minute, when we look at?
I'm looking, I was just looking at where, I'm trying to find where the presentations and updates are. That's, that, that, that's actually. Other than committee reports, speaking, that's communication reports, there's a time limit, there are five minutes on that.
Wait a minute, rule seven.
Section B. Notes in order, notes to order of business, number three, row and numeral number three. Those speaking under.
Oh, communicate, that's for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, is this presentation, this is for somebody presenting like a town employee or a. A developer or somebody like that, is that what we're referencing here?
Yeah, oh, but I'm thinking more it might be under. Go to rule five.
Okay.
Uh. Section B.
Should be the duty of the mayor to preserve order. Oh yeah, I'd say, I think, you have to, the counselors. It's almost like you want to expand it to say counselors and others wishing to speak.
And while, there's no declaring the votes, though. So, that's a tentative. Rule five, B. But. I'm trying to think of somewhere else.
We could also, instead of attaching it to B, we could just add it to the bottom of rule five and just make it its own thing. Because it is mayoral duties and responsibilities, and we could just say, letter H is that the mayor can set a timeline, limit on any presentations.
And updates.
And updates.
Updates.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Okay, rule five, add. Section. H. The mayor. Shall. Set.
The mayor shall.
Time. Limits. On presentations. And or updates. To.
Time. Limit.
To preserve, to preserve. Order. For the meetings.
Do we wanna make it shall, or do we wanna give him the ability, or her?
The mayor will. The, the mayor will.
Or can?
Can, thank you.
Can? Isn't, isn't shall like a legal, like, that you have, you have to do it, it doesn't, if we say shall, we don't think of it that way, but isn't that what it really means in legal terms, it's. If you use the word shall, it's like.
Shall is, you have to.
You have to, where can.
Can is, you have the option to.
Okay, the mayor can set a time limit on presentations.
While allowing the mayor to set a timeline on items that need. The mayor should have the ability to extend the time if needed. You know, you're right, the mayor can, okay.
Yeah, the mayor can set a time limit on presentations or updates.
Or presentations or updates to preserve. The order of the meetings. Uh, the meeting.
Of the meeting.
Of the, of, deserve, or, the, say that again, I'm messing it up, I just said it.
The mayor can set a time limit on presentations or updates to preserve the order of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, that's.
That's.
I want to say it, but I don't think it came out the way I want it, so.
It should be. Singular, I think, right, meeting is singular, so.
Yes.
The mayor can set a time limit or presentation, uh, on, set a time limit on presentations or updates to preserve the order of the meeting. Okay.
Which is consistent with what? Um, five B would be.
And it's gonna be called now a section.
H.
H, okay, so this is.
As in hotel.
This is, this is, this is gonna be rule. Five. Section. H.
Okay.
Okay.
Now. I have to go to.
Mayor and town manager will request support.
And.
That's okay, I see this. So. Uh, let me know when you wanna have this discussion, this is number five now, right?
Yes.
Counselor Parker, wasn't this present in other rules?
It was. I don't know when it changed out, I don't remember it changing out when I was voting on it, so. I would like to reestablish that, and.
Are we, currently, people just suggest, councils just suggest a referral, just sort of happens, right, it just becomes.
It just ends, ends up on, uh, on the agenda, on the packets. Um, just to streamline our agenda items, also does streamline, so our open agenda items doesn't become too overwhelming.
Mm-hmm.
My suggestion was, um, yes, streamlined, so that we can at least get some things that need to be taken care of and not. Hold on.
And if I.
The list has become very extreme, so.
If, if I read this correct, this, this would mean you would need four people, the person suggesting it, and then three others to support it, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Just it here.
But it also has to go to the mayor and the town manager to make, to make sure that they send it out. So that they reply back to the mayor or the town manager, or probably both, to say, yes, we want it on the agenda item. One, to avoid us replying all, so we do not.
Oh.
Discuss the agenda item. Per FOIA. And two, it streamlines who replies back to the mayor and the town manager.
So, it looks like it's in rule number nine, committees and referrals, F. Looks like, is the current. Is the current language on this, so that's the one we're gonna be changing.
I'm sorry, can you repeat where it is?
Um, rule number nine, page seven, rule number nine. Uh, section F, F as in Frank. On page seven.
Thank you.
This is here, referrals to committee made by the, by the mayor.
No, separate one. No, separate one. Oh yes, no, you're right, okay, I see it now.
That's, that's the one we're changing, right, that's the, we're, we're kinda putting some extra stuff on it.
Yeah. Which that probably really needs to be clearer language on anyways.
But this is where it just, like, anybody suggests anything and it just goes on, so. We're gonna change this number F, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay. So just a question that I have is, do you think? Three extra counselors is too many? Could it be two?
Previously was three.
Oh, it was three, okay.
Well, in other previous roles. Previous councils' roles.
Okay.
And, sorry, I'm trying to pull up how it was. Worded then. Rule nine.
So this would definitely. Make these things have more sort of meat to them.
Well, also, if it's important enough, you're gonna get support quickly, so.
So a question I have also is.
Yes.
Is this a retroactive thing? Or is, is that whole list that we now have, which is almost two pages, that just keep on going, and this is for everything that's new?
That's moving forward.
Moving forward, okay.
Because we can't change those already established on, at least in my mind, they've already put on as an agenda item, open agenda.
No, I just, I'm just asking the question, that's all.
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna. I, I think moving forward, this is how we should go.
Yep, okay.
Also, many of them are from previous councils anyway, so we wouldn't be able to retroactively do that.
Right, okay.
Why is my computer acting up? Is that a warning?
We have about five minutes, just. Putting that out there.
Okay. We do. Um, how would we write this?
Uh, let me see.
So, are you suggesting that all referrals need, I'm sorry, I don't know who actually, um, made the?
I did.
Okay, um, sorry, I didn't wanna say you if it.
It's okay, I'm more, will put my name out there on it.
You're saying you want it in writing, right?
To the mayor.
To the mayor, so we automatically take out this line, any counselor may request a referral at a meeting.
Actually, probably because. Technically, when they make the referral, ends up being a new agenda item, and that's something we shouldn't be discussing at a meeting anyways, if it's not on the agenda.
Right.
Right.
So what we're doing is really kind of formalizing something that's been kind of casual up for this, for this council. Where people just suggested, we're kind of giving it a little more framework.
Right.
Instead of saying any counselor may request a referral at a meeting, we change it to any counselor may request a referral in writing through the mayor and the town manager. And then the second sentence can go into how they need to have three.
So are you guys, do you guys think three or four total, no, four is, no, it's less than majority.
I think, I think four is okay, I, um. Because then it gets, then it moves forward and then we discussions and things about it, but it, I, I don't, if it's not. I think if you made it a majority, it changes the.
Right, it changes the dynamic of the.
Change the dynamic of what it is, it sort of now becomes, that becomes the thing that you're trying to do, where this just means, we're just trying to get it on the agenda, so I would think. I wouldn't do any more, I don't think any, to me, uh, four seems, I mean, you're gonna have to do some work to get four people or three other people to support you anyways.
Right.
So I, I think, to me, that's about. Otherwise, I think it changes the dynamic, and now you're sort of, you're voting on something before you're even voting on it. Is what you're doing, by making.
So have three or four? What?
If, if you have, if we have, if you have used a total of four, the person making the referral. And three counselors, if that is what it was before, I'm comfortable staying with.
No, a- actually, what it was before was the person made the referral and two others supported it.
So it was a total of three.
Three.
And now we're making it a total of four.
Which would be consistent on how we do committees.
Okay.
But. Besides committee of the whole, let me rephrase that. Um, just the thought process.
Yeah. Do you? We're trying to sort of also kind of throw, throttle back frivolous referrals, right, is what we're trying to also do here, to make it a little bit more, this is an important item that really needs to be discussed, as opposed to something we're sort of winging out there.
I, I. In my opinion, I think we just, our referral list is so long right now that we need to tackle some of the items on it before more can be added. I think this is just going to streamline, you know, the vetting process a little bit more, so if, if something important enough, you're gonna get council support, and then it's gonna go on, and obviously, it's important enough to get support. And if it's not, then maybe it's something that needs to wait a little bit until we tackle some of the to-do list. But that's just my opinion.
That was my reasoning for making the request, the referral.
I mean, we have two pages of a to-do list, basically.
Uh, Consul Casero, you. Comfortable with the three additional people, or would you rather have two, for a total of three or a total of four, I guess is the, is the question.
I think with how our referral list looks right now, I'm comfortable with three. Because, you're right, you're gonna have to work a little bit to get some support, and we have so much to do right now that I, I am comfortable with keeping it at three.
So a total of three, the person making the suggestion and two additional counselors.
No, I'm actually.
Oh, this, so total of four.
Total of four, yeah.
Right.
We have so much on this referral list right now. You know, if it's important enough, it's gonna get on there.
Right.
You know, i- if it's something that can wait, then maybe it needs to wait, because.
And if it was really onerous and nothing was happening, you could just go down, go back and change it to. Make it a total of three.
Right, we can always.
Is that?
Have a rules meeting.
Oh, I think we're gonna have to, because we had some questions anyways, so, alright, so. Any counselor may request a referral. To. The mayor and town manager in writing. The mayor. Or town manager. Will send out the referrals. To the counselors. To obtain. Support. Of adding. The referral. It's gonna be long-winded.
I'm, it's getting confusing here, wait a minute.
So, it. You see where I'm going with it, this, the counselor can get the request, but it's gotta be to the town mayor and the manager.
I think they may make a referral.
In writing.
They submit, they submit, they.
So, may submit.
A referral to the mayor, basically, it's just this and just flush out mayor.
But in writing in there.
Uh, the council may submit in writing.
Yeah.
A referral to the mayor and town manager. Manager, period.
Period, okay. So those, one of those two will send it out to the council with a response back to the mayor, the town manager, only.
Once a referral is received, the town mayor or town manager will. The referral will need this, alright. I'm just trying to figure out how to word this.
I know, it, yes, when I was writing it for myself, I, yeah, I got too wordy.
So, in the suggestions that are in, on our agenda, it doesn't say anything, obviously, let me go back over to page seven here, just. Uh, Chairman Parker, tell me if this is important, the referral shall be made to the requested committee, is that an important, is that the process? Cause that, those words aren't in. On the agenda.
No.
No, okay, I just.
Well, which is why I want to clear up the language and figure out why we left the referral should be made to the requested committee.
Okay.
So. For instance, the rules committee. We got a request. For us to have a meeting for those agenda items. Which rules committee is different than everybody else, so.
Okay, so any council may submit in writing a referral to the mayor or town manager, period.
Yeah, I would say, no, I would say and. I would say both, yes.
Yeah, mayor.
Just in case one of them. One misses it, the other will see it.
Okay. Once every referral is received. The mayor or town manager. See, that kind of, that just seems strange to me, I don't know what that means.
Okay, so once it's received, they will email what the referral is. This is, I probably should word it this better, it's really for the agenda items.
The mayor.
The mayor or town manager will distribute.
Oh, okay.
Will. Distribute.
The referral to the council?
Yep. To the town council. The referral. Will need. The support. Of an additional. Three, I'm just, I'm just writing, and then we can, then we can change it. To be considered.
Also, do you want people to sign on in writing? Do they have, sign on in writing?
Yeah, their responses should be going back to the town manager, so basically. Yeah. I, I just don't think we should all reply all on a meet.
Right.
Because all responses should go back to the town manager and the mayor.
We spot, we responses.
Counselor's response should be directed to the town manager and the mayor.
Response.
If they are, if the counselor is in support.
Should be. Directed to the mayor. Or town manager.
Well, considering they set the agenda, I would put both.
With both, okay, mayor and town manager, so there's a real procedure here.
Yes.
Counselor response should be diverted, and then the referral will need this, will need the written support. Of. And additional three counselors to be considered. So, let me just read what, what I think what we have here, okay. Any counselor may submit in writing a referral to the mayor and town manager. The mayor or to, or town manager will distribute the referral to the town council. Counselor's response should be directed to the mayor and. Town manager, the referral will need the written support of an additional three counselors to be considered. I think that written should also be in the previous sentence. Written response should be directed to, that's what it should be.
Counselor's written response?
Counselor's, counselor's written response. Should be directed to the mayor and town manager. So let me try this again. Any counselor may submit in writing a referral to the mayor and town manager. The mayor or town manager will distribute. The referral to the town council. Counselor's written response should be directed to the mayor and town manager. The referral will need the written support of an additional three counselors to be considered.
I think you should flip that.
To put this, the written support for, okay, so.
The referral will need three counselors and then written response should be directed to mayor and town manager.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're kind of describing something that you haven't.
Haven't done yet.
Yeah.
Alright, so say that last line again, the.
So let me read it, listen, any counselor may submit in writing a referral to the mayor and town manager. The mayor or town manager will distribute the referral to the town counselor, to the town council. The referral will need the written support of an additional three counselors to be considered. Counselor's written response should be directed to the mayor and town manager.
Okay, so I need the referral will need. Need the, was it support you said?
Written support.
Written support.
Yep. Of.
An additional.
Additional three. Counselors to be considered. And then. Counselor's written response. Should be directed, is should the right word there, but counselor's written response should be directed to the mayor and. Town manager.
Should is appropriate, and instead of saying written response, should we say something more of? Written response of support? Cause response seems kind of.
Oh, right, it could be, I don't want this.
You know what I mean?
Counselor's written response of support should be directed to the, to the mayor and town manager.
Yeah.
I agree, right, cause you could have people going the other way, too.
Right.
Right. And then that way, they don't, if they don't like the support, don't want to support the referral, they don't have to send it.
They can move on.
Alright, it is seven thirty-nine, I am so sorry we kept this, but we have questions. To go back and confirm, and there was two, I believe, two emails. For us to review, but we didn't receive those until just about having the meeting, so, um, I would like to discuss those at a later date.
Okay.
Um. Let's see, check on everybody's schedule. I think we have a good starting point. And thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for running a great meeting.
You're welcome, so. We are almost into October.
Yeah.
So. Um. We cannot do. We cannot do next Wednesday. Uh. I'm not sure if you wanted to. Yeah, if we can look at October.
So. Were you trying to get this ready for, um, the fourth?
No, we're not going to get ready for this by the fourth, because I have, I have, we need to review the two questions that were emailed to us tonight. And I have to ask, what was I was gonna ask John about?
We're curious about.
Adding the subsection. For number. John, at the next meeting. Now I forgot what we, what, what we said.
Yeah, I, my.
Oh, you know what, it's recorded, oh, we can look at this later on. Then I can review what was the question.
Okay.
Which recording comes in very handy.
So, Council Parker, do you want me to, to write, just write these up, that we've talked, this, these three things?
Yeah, cause I'm gonna compare it with my notes and I think that would.
And then do I send them to you and Counselor Casero, is that the? And then do I send them to you and Counselor Casiri, is that the correct, that's what I should do? Just tell me what I should, or do I just send them to you?
Send them to me, and then I will send them to Council Casiri, that way, where.
That's the proper chain of, yeah, okay, yep, no, I just didn't know that was right, so.
And then, Counselor Casiri, if you have any that you wrote up, send it directly to me, and then I will send it to him, so that we all compare the notes together.
Great.
So. This was a good meeting, but.
Do you, you looking at like maybe the sixth, the Thursday, or?
Thursday, I have, um, Board of Ed, the, still doing, um, I believe that's the day we're doing, uh, negotiations. And the next time, unless we do the third, we could do the, no, we can't do the fifth, cuz we have.
I'm okay with the third, if you wanted to do the third.
Uh, at Council Casiri, how's your schedule?
Um, the third.
Monday.
Will be okay if we keep it a, um, a six-thirty meeting, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, so six-thirty Zoom would work for everyone.
That works for me, yeah.
That works for me, and by then. I'll review this, I'll ask the manager to review it to. So that he can hear the question or concern that we had.
Great.
Pretty Zoom. Today's Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, so we'll make it in the, it'll be in a timely manner for, to. Is that gonna be enough time to post for the meeting? Yes, I can ask for a continuance on our meeting. I email it tonight. Forty hours to get the minutes typed up, yes. Okay. So are we all comfortable with what we've discussed?
I think so, yeah. And I'll write my notes up and get them to you.
Then I will type up the minutes, it'll be a draft form. And we can approve those or not approve those at the next meeting, um, for October third. Ten-three at six-thirty. Via Zoom. Thank you guys so much.
Are we, um, not supposed to adjourn this because?
We're still in this discussion, so we can recess. Alright, can I get a motion to recess?
So, no.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are recessing at seven forty-five PM, thank you all.
Alright, thank you, alright.
Goodbye.